...of the Mayor and Board of All the Persons Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen at six P. M. in the courtroom here at City Hall. You have a copy of the agenda. This is our call to order. We're going to stand for a moment of silence. We're gonna ask Councilman Shaw to lead us in prayer, and then Councilman Prater to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Stand up for one more. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and just thanking you for your gracious love for us, Lord, and as a city and as a community and as a parish, Lord. We just pray that you be with us tonight as we conduct the meeting. We pray that you would bless our efforts, Lord, that we would continue to improve our city and our parish, Lord. Again, we thank you for this opportunity tonight. Thank you for each one here, and we pray blessings for everyone here tonight. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Salute the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Goldman, roll call, please.
Here.
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 President.
Here.
We have a quorum. This meeting is now in session. Announcements. Does anyone have any announcements, counsel from the council? Public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. If there's anyone that have a comment on any item on the agenda, you're welcome to come to the microphone, state your name, address, and give your comment.
Mayor, well, there is one I'd like to make.
Okay.
But we do have a new council person tonight, and we just welcome her.
Thank you.
Robert, I was gonna say something when I read notices hereby given of the regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of All the Persons and not all the men, and it was great to read that, but I'm glad you mentioned that because it really stood out when I read that in my mind. Thank you. Thank you so much. All the person, greetings.
Thank you.
Okay, we're glad to have you.
Oh, not that, 'cause I used to kick Marvin.
Uh-uh. Don't kick me.
Okay. Item five, approve of previous minutes, the regular meeting October tenth, two thousand and eighteen, and the special meeting October twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. Gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes. Regular meeting October tenth and special meeting October twenty-second.
It's been moved by Councilman Moore, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Councilman Prater, that the minutes be approved. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Item six, Finance Committee Report, Resolution nineteen dash eighteen sixty-nine, bills and claims for the month of October two thousand and eighteen. Finance Committee Chair, Councilman Locke.
May I move that we accept the Finance Committee Report, Resolution nineteen eighteen sixty-nine, bills and claims for the month of October two thousand and nineteen?
It's been moved. It's been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by?
Shaw.
Councilman Shaw. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The report is, the resolution is adopted. Item seven, Revenue Expense Report, September twen- two thousand and eighteen.
Mayor, that's a report. No action is needed.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Item eight, Ms. Tana Trichelle, President, CEO of N. E. L. A. Economic Alliance, ITEP Tax Abatement. Good to see you again for the second meeting today.
Absolutely.
No, third. This is our third meeting today.
Congratulations, Ms. Moore, on your winning the election for Alderman. This is a great Alderman committee, and I enjoy working with the mayor so much. But I thought as a treat, before I got into ITEP, all of, everything that I brought is on your computer system, so you have copies, but this is a copy of the certification boundaries for the site.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Mr. Floyd to train the camera over on you, so the audience at home and future can, can see your presentation. I didn't mean to interrupt, but go ahead.
No, that's quite all right. I read the story, and I was a little disappointed that I wasn't the star of it because the money to do this comes out of our regional budget for certification. So I worked with the gentleman at LED who is in charge of certifications there, and we signed a cooperative agreement to certify this site. So we've handled all the bills on it, and we're delighted. We think, and he has said, and I just want you to know, that this is one of the best sites in Louisiana because of its rail and its access to highways and, you know, and it's been tested environmentally. It's a safe site, and I have high expectations. So that was your treat. Can we move to, oh, I have the thing.
And this is the International Paper Site that Mr. Trichelle is the former IP site.
Yes, eighty acres have been certified. Thank you, okay. Eighty acres have been certified, and then you have this additional acreage down here that is multipurpose property, and I think, didn't the owners donate a building to the city?
They did. They donated the IP Training Center. There's an entire block that they donated to, to the city of Bastrop, and it's a fine building.
It is.
It's one of the better, better buildings in Morehouse Parish.
It is.
How many acres does it own there?
Sir, you wanna come get this off of here?
It's eighty-plus acres.
Yeah, eighty-plus.
It's, and it's got two buildings, two warehouses, fifteen thousand and thirty thousand, and he also worked a deal with Simmons to sell them a part adjacent to their property, which was really good for Simmons, and, you know, they are, they are really an economic driver in this parish. So.
Here, let me see. Here, I'll get it for you.
Thank you. This must be a Windows system. I'm a Mac person. Okay, yeah, leave it there. Okay. Okay.
That's not it. You have to go down.
I have to go down?
That's the temporary folder. Here, let me see.
Well, you might need to stay with me.
Okay.
Until I get this done. It's been about seven or eight years since I operated a Windows program, so.
Which one you trying to, IT Simplify?
That one, the one, the one you were on, yeah.
This one?
The one with the dash in it.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. In July, two thousand and sixteen, the governor through an executive order established a sharing of the ITEP incentive because it involved money with the, the cities, the school districts, the police jury, and the sheriff. And what we found when he did that, because this, we've been doing it the same way for eighty years, we just gave the incentive because so many jobs were involved when we did, that it made up for what the entities lost. But he really wasn't, I don't think, familiar with that part. So what happened is we couldn't respond to an RFP in a timely manner by going through the agencies, and, you know, sometimes we'd have to go two or three times, and Texas would already have the project, or Alabama, Mississippi, or Arkansas. So in order for us to compete, there had to be some changes made, and this final change is that the request, the, the company has to fill out an appropriate number of papers, but the request has to go to the Industrial Development Board. Okay, I know how to do this. Alrighty, okay. So as you can see, what happened is we lost deals, sixty-six percent reduction in the deals we were getting. So there had to be some resolution to that obstacle, and so in the red areas are where they had difficulties in getting the incentives for companies that were trying to come in. So, and you have this. So the State Board gave the final approval for the changes in handling the industrial tax exemption. It now goes to the Department of Commerce, Louisiana Board of Commerce, and if they approve it, the entities that it might affect have thirty days to respond. If they don't respond, then it passes. If they do respond, then they have to take into consideration what that response is. It is an abatement of some taxes to incentivize companies to come or expand. And when you're talking about millions of dollars of investments, Louisiana charges taxes on, on capital, you know, on machinery, and other states don't. So, you know, we are trying to come up with a solution that will work where we can act fast. So my request to you tonight is, would you consider giving authority for over fifty employees to grant the tax exemption? That would just require a resolution on your part and approval. And why I say over fifty is because the incentives for employees in the state start with fifty employees and up. They can't act, you can't access something if you're not gonna have fifty employees. Unfortunately, we used to have some things that helped in that area, but the legislature didn't agree to continue them. What that would do, what I'm requesting, would help us to act quickly. The, the incentives cannot be given to a company that, these are tax paid dollars, cannot be given to a company unless they meet a certain salary structure that they guarantee to hire so many employees, and the incentives are spread out over a period of time. If they don't meet what they agreed to do, there's a clawback or rescinding of what they were given. So these are quality jobs, and what that means is they have health insurance, they have 401Ks, they pay higher than the minimum wage by, by almost more than twice. I have asked the state, I haven't won this one, but it's not over, I've asked the state to reduce that number in this area, 'cause I think it's about eighteen dollars, and our average pay in this area is about fourteen. So anyway, that notwithstanding, that's another battle, I am asking you to consider that your, your normal abatement of taxes for a company, if a company came into our site, and that's why I showed it to you, that site is, has low taxes right now, low taxes. So you, you're not getting an industrial tax on it anyway, but if a company came in with over fifty employees, and let's say they had an average salary of forty-five thousand a year, well, let's make it fifty, 'cause I can't do the math in my head, that's, that's fifty times fifty, how much is that? Two, two-point-five million payroll? If that circulates eight times in your local economy, that's millions of dollars. So that's new washing machines, new cars, new houses, and new income for the police jury, for the schools, for the sheriff, for the police jury. So how many of those projects have you seen already?
None.
Okay, so if we get a chance at one, don't you think we ought to be able to give it our best shot? We have ammunition, we need a commitment and a partnership with our parishes, our cities, our sheriffs, and our school boards, because if we get an opportunity at that, I don't wanna have to tell them, we'll be right with you in thirty days.
What, what you saying, Mr. Trichelle, is that as, as we've been, we've attended sessions on this at LMA, and what it does, it preconditions, is there's a pre-agreement that we would offer tax incentives. What would happen if someone contacted Mr. Trichelle about locating in, in the IP? Then they've gotta come to us and wait on us to meet, and then we'll say, okay, yeah, we'll give you so many years of tax abatement. And that takes time, and meanwhile, Texas and Mississippi and Tennessee says, hey, you, we'll give you an answer right now.
We don't do that.
So this is something that's, that we haven't seen anyone at the state level object to or say it's a bad idea.
Correct. They ask us actually to come.
Yes, ma'am.
LED.
So we would have to get a, a resolution to Mr. Pierre, and we can take this up at the.
New Councilman.
Well, it would actually come to me. Your resolution would come to me.
Yes, okay.
Then we'd take it through the process.
Okay, if you can submit it to Mr. Pierre, submit it to me, and I'll submit it to Mr. Pierre to, as we do all resolutions.
Ultimately come to me.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
Yes, Dana, but it's a great idea, and I feel that this council will accommodate.
That would be awesome. You know, I, I think the, the property and the opportunities you have, what you've done with, y'all have done with raising the community attractiveness, participation in the parks, and I gotta tell you, when we got the National Park Service, guess who the greediest person was in the whole mix? Mayor Cotton said, I have eight parks I want you to do. He did one in all the other little towns that we went to that were smaller than Bastrop, but he, he, he did wonderfully well. I say greedy. He just stepped up to the plate and said, this is what I want. And the National Park Service came in, met with him personally, more than one occasion, right?
And they're still working with us. We have an agreement.
Oh, that's awesome.
To, yes, ma'am. And thanks to you for inviting me to that first meeting in Farnival.
You're welcome.
Dana, that started the ball rolling in twenty seventeen.
Well, our responsibility, if we're not bringing, you know, working on a project, our duty is to help raise the communities, help raise the labor force.
Can you, can you talk, just to give identi-, to give identification to the organization, what parishes are you, or is our organization in?
Yes, sir.
And I say our organization, but.
Yes, he's on the board, which is, thank you for that help.
Yes, ma'am.
It's Union, Washatale, Caldwell, over to Tensile, and on the top, over to East Carroll. So we really have the poorest region in the state, and some would say.
In the country.
Close in the south. But we're, you know, we're working hard, and, and I think that when you serve, you serve with passion. I see that almost everywhere I go, and that passion helps you to make good decisions on behalf of the citizens and to protect them from something that's not good for them. And so I did wanna, if, if you'll give me the, the opportunity to introduce something I hadn't planned to talk to, you have an opportunity zone, and it's one census tract, it's on this presentation.
Yeah.
So you can pass it around to everyone.
Okay.
But I have to go look in that property and see if there's some site value in there, because it does not contain a certified site, to my knowledge.
You mean the, we, we have two opportunity zones.
Yes.
One is with the IP tract down to DG Foods.
Yes.
And the other one contains the place where we were today, the Ditto Building.
Okay, well, those are solid go, because it inspires investment, capital gains investment, because a company can come in, use capital gains, and invest in this, and get an abatement of their capital gains tax. So that's sort of the summation of that program, and I congratulate you on the hydroponics project. I visited it, and I think it is a wonderful opportunity for that building, which we have turned in on, I'm gonna say, fifty times or more.
Yeah.
And it just hadn't sold, but that is a great utilization of it, and I applaud your, your initiative.
Well, we appreciate all the hard work that, and, and the investment that, that, the organization that you are CEO of, your allocation of resources to the International Paper, former International Paper Property, we appreciate that.
It's worthy.
From the bottom of our hearts. So thank you for working on that to help us get that blue ribbon certification. What it means is on the, on the website of Louisiana Economic Development, and is viewed by developers all over the world.
Absolutely.
And, you know, you've got to show what you got.
Well, it will bring investment. It will bring investment quicker to this site than many of the other sites.
Okay.
You have the tools to support a lot of jobs coming in, and that's our hope and prayer, but if it's several small companies coming in, we'll take that too.
Yes, we will.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you for letting me come.
Okay. Any question, any, any discussion, gentlemen?
Lady.
Lady. I'm so used to it. I had, Councilman Moore, I'm so used to it, I'm so sorry.
I'll remind you.
Do I have a few more times to slip up, and you're gonna hit me?
Today, just today.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
It's Prater like.
Counsel, counsel person. Thank you, Ms. Tana.
Thank you.
Thank you. With all apologies to Councilman Moore. Lady, lady and gentleman.
Counselwoman.
Counselwoman, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, that, that has a lot of, of promise, so we expect Mr. Pierre to get that resolution and, and present it to us for adoption. It helps to be ready to receive industry, because it's, it's a tight fight with a short stick sometimes, and you've gotta be ready to turn on a dime to, to take advantage of, of, I know of several initiatives that very good, very big, that Mississippi got, and we came in second to. People don't know, Dana, I was just saying, there are many things that come, and we, we come in second several times.
Toyota, Volkswagen, Caterpillar, Samantha Moore, Bentley Steel, which I went to Germany and brought back to project farm. They ended up in Shreveport. That's why our hub, our region should be separate on its own. We cannot compete with Shreveport.
Okay.
We cannot. Any project that comes in, if they show us and they show Shreveport, we're out of there.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. Those, those car plants, we really wanted to get those here, that Toyota Mazda, and we wanted to even get, they had a deal where if you were within hundred and fifty miles of the plant, you may be able to get a, a, you don't make the whole car in one place. I wanted to, I wanted to try to get where the engines were produced on the IP site. We didn't, we didn't prevail, but we're, we're working, and you can't.
Mayor, it's not over.
It's not over, yes. That would've been so good if we could've announced that, but, and we don't talk about those things, the efforts that we're making, but, because we can't. But thank you, Tana, for all you do. You're only.
Yours.
Okay.
You're so welcome. My heart.
Okay, love you now. Take care.
You too.
Okay. All right. Item nine, appoint members to the Bastrop Fire and Police Civil Service Board. And Mr. Walter Moore, is he here? Is Mr. Moore here? Is Mr. James George Scott, is he here? They are willing, Ms. Goldman, is my understanding that they are willing to continue?
Yes, sir, their appointment ends, I think it's December the tenth, and we called them, and they said they are willing to renew if the city would appoint them again.
So I would like to offer their names.
Make the motion there.
To tender their names. So it's been moved by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Locke, that this, that this appointment is approved by the council. Any discussion? Lady and gentleman, what is your pleasure?
No questions.
Okay. Did we need a vote?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Ayes?
All in favor.
All in favor? Thank you for helping me, DeeDee. All opposed? Yes.
I'm not trying to do that.
I'm throwing off a little bit now. Would delight, of course. So it's been approved that we, the appointments are approved, Mr. Walter Moore and Mr. James George Scott, to, to serve on our Fire and Police Civil Service Board. Item ten, Resolution nineteen dash eighteen seventy, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a strategic cybersecurity plan development agreement for the city of Bastrop for its November fifteenth, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty, yes, with Voss Computer Systems. And what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution nineteen dash eighteen seventy.
It's been, it's been moved by Councilwoman Shaw.
No, Moore.
Moore, Moore, I'm sorry. I was so, I was trying to get the, look, I was trying to get the Councilwoman to, yeah, take over, yeah.
Mr. Pierre, Mr. Pierre.
He needs to.
You need to put a sign on it. That's your job, Mr. Pierre.
Look, I was so focused on Councilwoman until, and who seconded? You did, right? So I was trying to get the Councilwoman and Councilman Shaw in that, so it was moved by Councilwoman Moore, and seconded by Councilman Shaw. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Thank you so much. We're gonna get used to this, and it, look, it's, it's with pleasure that we're getting used to it.
That's Moore in six seconds.
Eleven, Resolution nineteen dash eighteen seventy-one, a resolution commending Mr. Frank Goldsby for his dedication, dedicated service to our community. As we know, Mr. Frank Goldsby was the first African-American law enforcement officer with the Morehouse Parish Sheriff's Department. He, he passed recently, and we have prepared a special commendation, a special official document, and I wanted the council to, to approve this and to endorse what we have written to present to his family. So I'd like to have a motion, of, of course, with the city of Bastrop, the officers, first black or African-American officers, was Mr. Fisher Lewis, I believe.
It was BB.
BB?
Yeah, BB.
BB, yeah. You remember, I think, I thought Fisher was first. We'll find out. We'll find out.
Fisher was with the city.
Fisher was with the city.
Fisher and, Fisher was with the city, Fisher Lewis.
BB and Frank was with the sheriff.
Yeah. And BB was the second when there was hired with the Sheriff's Department, yes.
Sheriff's Department, Fisher was police.
Yes.
Yeah, Fisher, yeah, police.
Yes. And we are very proud to see them, those of us who are old enough to remember that, to see, uh, African-American representation in law enforcement. Uh, that was a step in the right direction, so Mr. Goldsby was that first person and I just prepared something, uh, to present to his family. That's Resolution nineteen dash eighteen seventy-one. Uh, can I get a motion for that?
I make the motion, Mayor.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Shaw, that this resolution is adopted. Or, or was, was it you, Mr. Prey?
We need to move you.
It was a tie.
We need to move seat tonight.
Mr. Prey, can you replay the, can you replay the tape?
Anything.
It was a tie. Okay, well, Mr. Prey.
Second, okay.
Well, Mr. Prey, Mr. Shaw was trying to make the motion. Is that true, Mr. Shaw?
Well, I was listening to see if DeeDee was gonna do it.
Oh, I thought you were trying to make the motion.
Yeah, I'm seconding.
Okay, well, Ms. Goldman, you know who seconded and who made the motion. Yeah, I won't say who did it. Yeah, son, just need a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, thank you so much. Um, item twelve, Resolution nineteen dash eighteen seventy-two, a resolution of the mayor and board of all persons of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to retain and re-engage the, the professional services of the Pruitt Group and to perform all other reasonable and necessary acts related thereto. Uh, Ms. Goldman, Mr. Pruitt, can you elaborate on who Mr. Pruitt is and what he does for us?
Yes, sir, he's the one that helps us with the Washington, getting our federal money. We've used him several years. It's time to renew his contract and the mayor, um, talked to him and got him to reduce his fees.
That's good.
Because he understands that we don't have a lot of money, but yet we still need his services, so, uh, we would like for y'all to consider this, given the mayor permission.
And Mr. Pruitt is a team player and he's very knowledgeable and offers a great service to the city of Bastrop. He is our official representative as he walks the halls of Congress and the Senate, uh, and, and, and at different committees. He keeps up with things and he's a great asset.
May I move the?
Go ahead, Mr. Locke.
I move that we accept Resolution nineteen dash eighteen seventy-two.
I second.
Been moved by Finance Committee Chair, Councilman Locke, second by Councilwoman Moore. Um, thank you. Councilwoman Moore, all in, are in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Um, liquor license, um, we have a list of liquor license, Chief Campbell. Good evening, Chief.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Board of all the persons. I come to you with renewals for twenty twenty and the list goes, uh, Morehouse Country Club, seventeen twenty-nine Gladney Drive, a Class B private club, Circle K number twenty-seven twenty-three four fifty-two, fifteen fourteen East Madison Avenue, a Class A retail dealer off premises, Fuel Track Easy Mart LLC, twelve thirty-one North Washington Street, a Class A retail dealer off premises, Fuel Track Louisiana LLC, thirteen oh one North Washington, Class A retail dealer off premises, Happy Stop Welcome LLC, twelve thirty-three North Washington, Class A retail dealer off premises, Walgreens number one oh five three six nineteen thirty East Madison Avenue, a Class A retail dealer off premises, Veterans Private Club twenty-three twenty-four and one half East Madison Avenue, Class B a private club, Sissy's U-Packet LLC, sixteen thirty East Madison Avenue, Class A beer only retail dealer off premises, Super One Foods number six oh three twenty-two eleven Ma- East Madison Avenue, retail dealer off premises only, Stop and Save fourteen oh five South Washington Street, Class A retail dealer off premises, Specialty Daquers and Spirits nineteen twenty-three North Washington Street, Class B retail dealer on premises, and Bayou Butts and Booze number twenty-five, one thousand eight East Madison Avenue, a Class A retail dealer off premises. I recommend to this Board of all the persons and Mayor that we approve these twelve for the calendar year twenty twenty for their liquor license.
Lady and gentleman, do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
I second, Mayor.
Been moved by Councilwoman Moore, council, yeah, Councilwoman Moore, second by, uh, Councilman Green, that we approve these licenses, in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Uh, item number fourteen, Mr. Ricky Allen Anderson and Ms. Kristy Lally. Hello, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Lally, would you come up and give your name and your address?
Good evening, my name is Ricky Allen Anderson, five fourteen Comer Street, Bastrop, Louisiana. I'm here in support of Ms. Kristy Lally and the Lally family and the death of their son, DeMario, DeMontrel Lally. Uh, I will turn it over to Ms. Lally at this time, she'll be speaking on behalf of the family.
Good evening, Ms. Lally.
Good evening.
Can you give your name and address?
My name is Kristy Renee Lally, I stay at four oh one Jackson Street, Bastrop, Louisiana.
Chief, if there's a piece of evidence that I'm not aware of, bring it to me. If there's a stone that I'm not aware of that I haven't turned over, point it to me. If there's a person that my people have not talked to, point me to them. It's my goal to bring this family justice and it's my goal to solve every crime laid in my lap because every one of them is mine. So I can only stand, I'm not gonna grandstand, I don't need the public's eye, I just need to let them know that I'm gonna do my damnedest to do my job and that's all I gotta say.
Right.
If I'm not aware of the evidence, it's because it's hadn't been brought and laid on my desk, but I can assure you, I can put my people out to rolling and doing their job with your blessing. I have that, don't I?
Yes, sir, you do have the blessing.
So with that being said, that's all I need to say.
What I'm doing is.
Is that if I'm not aware of it or if it's someone that needs to be spoken with about DeMontrel Lally's murder, I'll be in office at eight o'clock in the morning and I expect you to call.
I have a question.
I'm not going, other than that, I'm not going to discuss the case of this homicide.
Yeah, I want to. And let, let me state this, uh, Ms. Lally, Ms. Lally, thank you all for coming.
May I move that we adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved and second, it's been moved by Councilman Locke, second by Councilman Shaw, that we adjourn this meeting. Uh, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Council lady.
Council lady, too.
Councilwoman.
He came in too bold tonight. Did not have to give her suspension.
I got my people with me.
All, all in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
The meeting's adjourned.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Very good.